Crystal? Oh, never mind. Never mind.
I am going to go to my old-school laptop because my new one apparently does not like the Zoom camera, so.
Okay.
I will be right back.
Thanks, Inga.
Do you want to wait a few minutes to start then?
No, I would say go ahead because I know there's a concept calendar and some other things, so I will leave the other.
As our agency to the redevelopment agency, Housing Authority Regular Meeting, would everyone please rise while we say the Pledge of Allegiance? The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands.
To the nation under God indivisible and with liberty and justice for all. All right. Welcome, everyone. This is a once-a-year event that we engage in. It's called our Council Reorganization. We don't really conduct any serious business tonight, although it is serious when you are bringing in a new council member, saying goodbye to another council member, and welcoming a new treasurer and saying goodbye to another. So I don't want to minimize the seriousness of it, but it's a lot more fun for this kind of a meeting to have this, and I welcome everybody. The next item on is changes to the order of the agenda. Is anybody suggesting that we change anything on the agenda?
Nothing from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Nothing from staff this evening.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. All right. Hearing none, we're going to move on to 4A. We are going to present a proclamation tonight, and I hope that Brian Perkins is with us. Are you there, Brian?
I am, Mr. Mayor.
There you are. Well, Brian, we are honoring you tonight with the proclamation, and I'd like to read it in part. Whereas Brian Perkins has educated, advised, and helped numerous San Carlosans in their pursuit of elective office and development of a sound public policy; and whereas Brian has selflessly given time and energy to numerous local groups and events, including the Lions Club, Art and Wine Fair, the Chamber of Commerce, Civic Liaison Committee, and its many other events and activities; and whereas Brian is a staunch supporter of public education in our local schools and is tirelessly supported, both his personal and professional capacities, even long after his son graduated from them; and whereas Brian, in his professional capacity, has worked for Assemblyman Ted Lampard, Supervisor Adrian Tissier, and State Senator and now Congressman Jackie Spear, Congresswoman Jackie Spear, excuse me, has helped countless people in their organizations receive governmental assistance and get their issues addressed; and whereas Brian played an important role in securing San Mateo County's future by working to get funding for the South Bayfront Levy Improvements Project and helping to ensure support for the county's Sea Change Initiative and address the consequences of climate change-induced sea level rise; and whereas Brian has a deep and profound respect for our Constitution, our representative democracy, and makes the system work for people while upholding the highest ethical standards, balancing passionate energy, thoughtfulness, and humor. So therefore, it be proclaimed that I, Ron Collins, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, and on behalf of the entire City Council and our community, hereby recognize Brian Perkins for his years of service to the San Carlos community. So, Brian, I suspect this might have been a bit of a surprise, but this is something that we've wanted to do for a long time, Mark especially, and he gets credit for definitely being the impetus behind this, but I can't think of a better person in our community to honor. So I'm very pleased to present this to you tonight, and you should be getting an official copy, certainly not the photocopy that I'm reading right now. But before we go on, I'd just like to give you this opportunity to say a few words if you like.
Well, needless to say, I'm blown away, but thank you so much, everyone. That's very kind of you. You know, the rule in our line of business is that staff is not to be seen or heard in public exactly, so I'm going to make this short, but it's a wonderful community, and I couldn't think of a better place to raise a family. It's an honor to be able to serve here. Thank you so much, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Mark, was there anything that you wanted to add on Brian's behalf?
You know, I think that pretty much covered the waterfront, and I think if I say anything else, he's never going to let me live it down and forgive me, so I'm going to...
Okay. Well, I'm sure you'll have a few. I'm sure we'll be hearing from you in a little bit.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Next, we're going to move on to... Hang on a second. This is a different agenda. Oh! The next item is public comment, and, Crystal, do we have any members of the public that would like to speak?
Sorry, I'm having some technical difficulty. Give me one second here. I'm not able to see anything right now.
I don't see any hands raised.
So you are able to see the screen? Okay, thank you. I do want to mention, since I know we have a number of visitors who are new to our teleconference meetings, so if you want to indulge me for just a second here... So in order to make a public comment, you must join the meeting through Zoom. Some of you may be watching this on our Comcast or AT&amp;T channels, so if you want to make a public comment, please join us through Zoom. You can get that information on our agenda. And once you join through Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature to let us know that you'd like to make a public comment. So again, that information that you need to join Zoom is on the meeting agenda. You can just go to zoom.com and enter meeting ID number 83607759364. And I don't see any hands raised at this time either.
Okay. Anything else that you wanted to add regarding procedure tonight, Crystal?
For the public comment, that would be it for now. Thank you.
Okay. Great. All right. Well, seeing no public comment, we'll move on to item six. This is new business: Consideration of Adopting a Resolution Accepting the Certificate of the Chief Elections Officer and the Statement of Votes Cast in Consolidated General Municipal Election Held on November 3, 2020 and Declaring the Results.
Okay.
Crystal is...
That would be me.
Now your turn.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Collins and City Council. I'm Crystal Moy, your City Clerk. A general municipal election was held in San Carlos on Tuesday, November 3, 2020, for the purpose of electing two members of the City Council for the full term of four years and a city treasurer for the full term of four years. The results of the election, as reported by the San Mateo County's Chief Elections Officer, Mark Church, are as follows. The whole number of ballots cast in the City of San Carlos for the election was 19,174. For the Office of City Council, J.T. Eden received 4,472 votes. David B. Tom received 5,356 votes. John Dugan received 8,468 votes. And Ron Collins received 9,843 votes. So Ron Collins and John Dugan received the highest number of votes and are therefore elected as members of the San Carlos City Council. For the Office of the City Treasurer, Inga Tiggo-Doherty received 13,020 votes. Inga Tiggo-Doherty is therefore elected as our San Carlos City Treasurer, and it is recommended now that the City Council adopt a resolution accepting the certification of the Chief Elections Officer and the Statement of Votes.
Crystal, do we need a motion on this?
Yes, please.
If I could find your motion, Crystal, I would make it. I move... How about, can I just say, I move to adopt and certify the results of the election? Do you need the specifics? I have to find it. Sorry.
I can make it if...
I can do it, Ron. Let me do it. You were...
Okay. Go ahead.
Give me one second. I'll find it. I just need to pull up my email. Here we go. All right. I move to adopt Resolution 2020...
90.
...a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos accepting the certificate of the Chief Elections Officer and the Statement of Votes Cast in the Consolidated General Municipal Election Held on November 3, 2020 and declaring the results.
Second? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Palmer-Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes. Okay. Certified. We're now going to move on to recognition of our outgoing or retiring city treasurer, Mike Galvin. Mike, are you here? There you are. I see you.
Sorry, through the chair just really quickly. I do want to bring up this slide so we can formally recognize a few of our... some elected officials that we have joining us here tonight, as well as some VIPs. We have State Senator Josh Becker, Millbury Councilmember Wayne Lee, Redwood City Vice Mayor Giselle Hale, Amy Buckmaster, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, as well as, I believe, Wendy Shatino has joined us, Joe LaMariana, Executive Director of Rethink Waste, Seth Rosenblatt, former San Carlos School Board Trustee. I was told that Bob Grisilli and Andy Klein, two of our former council members and former mayors, have also joined us. And Tara and Rebecca, if you want to come online to share a few of the other ones, I know you guys were able to find a few other VIPs that have joined us this evening.
Right?
Warren Lieberman from the City of Belmont is on.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Anybody else?
That might be it. There was... We have a number of people.
I see there's... I think Karen Mullenari from Healthy Cities and Kathy Palmer-Lohan from the Ed Foundation are on as well, or SCAP, I should say. Sorry.
Terrific. Okay.
Okay.
Have we missed anybody? All right.
Thank you.
We do have some presentations. I believe there may be a representative of Jackie Spear's office here tonight, since we just gave her proclamation. Brian, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Mike, thank you so much for all of your years of service to the people of San Carlos. The Congresswoman has created a certificate of recognition, and I also want to point out, because it might elude some people, she sits on the House Armed Services Committee and the House Intelligence Committee, so this particular certificate is a bit broader than just your city treasurer's work. In recognition of Mike Galvin, thank you for your service to the residents of San Carlos as city treasurer for 32 years. During this time, the funds of the city were fully accounted for and well managed. In addition, you served our nation as an infantryman in Vietnam, earning a Bronze Star, and in various senior positions, working for the California Public Utilities Commission during a multi-decade career. Thank you for your military service on behalf of our nation and for your service at the state level, and you defended consumers by ensuring the utility finances were thoroughly evaluated. Good luck in the years ahead. And Mike, on behalf of myself and my family as San Carlos residents, we never had to wonder where the money was. It was always in good hands. Good luck to you in the future.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Next is Assemblymember Kevin Mullin's office. Do we have a representative from Kevin Mullin's office?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is Mario Rindon with Assemblymember Kevin Mullin's office.
Hello, Mario.
So on behalf of Assemblymember Mullin, Michael, congratulations on your retirement, and most importantly, it has been a life dedicated to public service, not just the city treasurer, but as Brian mentioned earlier, you spent your entire career in public office in some capacity or public service. And so, as many on this call know, this is often a thankless task, but thank you for devoting this much time and energy to this community. So on behalf of Assemblymember Mullin, congratulations.
Thank you, Mario. Next up is Lena Silverman from San Mateo County Board of Supervisor, Don Horson's office.
Hi. So yeah, my name is Lena Silverman, and I am from Supervisor's office, and I'm so happy to be here today. Supervisor had me come especially because I have been a resident of San Carlos for my entire life, which is still 10 years less than the years of service that we've had Mr. Galvin as treasurer, so I've enjoyed my entire career in San Carlos from him, and it's been wonderful. So we all want to thank you so much. The Board of Supervisors of San Mateo County wants to thank you so much for your years of service.
Great. Thank you, Lena. Okay. I see my name next. So I would just like to thank Mike for all of his years of service. I do have a proclamation that I'd like to read. This is, "Whereas Michael Galvin was first elected in November 1987 to be the San Carlos City Treasurer and has since been reelected seven times to continue in that capacity. And whereas over the last three decades as city treasurer, Mike was responsible for the receipt, custody, and management of funds, investment of funds, and deposits of funds in accordance with the procedures set forth by state law. Furthermore, he provided essential routine services to the city, including but not limited to reviewing and signing payroll and vendor warrants, providing investment advice, conducting internal control and financial efficiency reviews, and researching and preparing lien release notices. During Mike's tenure, his accomplishments include assisting the Finance Division in selection of audit firms, setting the warrant process to allow electronic signatures on checks, and updating the internal control procedures for accounts payable. Mike's financial background and acumen proved instrumental in assisting projects that resulted in cost-saving measures such as closing out the Civic Center Authority and closing four special assessment districts. While serving as city treasurer, Mike represented the city as a member of the Investment Committees of the City-County Association of Governments and the South Bayside Waste Management Authority. Additionally, during his tenure, he pursued his certified municipal treasurer's certificate and annually participated in professional development trainings focused on the city treasurer's responsibilities and operational programs to keep current on financial matters." So, Mike, I want to thank you. You've always been extremely professional. I know we didn't see you very much, but I think, you know, the fact that we didn't see you meant that things were going pretty well, but I do remember when you came to our budget meetings, that it was always good to have an elected member of the public overseeing those meetings. So congratulations. We will miss you, and we wish you well in the holidays and on in our best to earn. At this point, Mike, I did talk to you yesterday, and you assured me that you're a man of few words, but I want to give you the opportunity to say as much as you'd like tonight.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My last official elected position, I just want to say that I was elected eight times, not seven times, as I think you mentioned, so hopefully it's correct on the document.
We'll get that fixed.
But I do want to take this time to thank Rebecca Mendoza, Kerry Tam, and our finance team for the quality work that they've been performing, which has been able to make my job... my job a lot easier and more efficient. Thank you very much, and I've enjoyed my tenure with the city. That's it.
Thank you, Mike. We, we very much, we very much appreciate your service to the, to the city. At this point, we have, if there are any public comments, any members in the public, Crystal, that wish to talk at this point?
I'm not seeing anybody. If, if you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand by clicking on the little button on the bottom of your screen.
I'm not seeing any of the attendees, all right. All right, and before we move on to the, the next item, just, I wanted to ask if there's any council members that wish to make any comments before we, we move on to administering the oath to our incoming treasurer. And Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. I just want to acknowledge, Mike, your steadfast and trustworthy stewardship and commitment to our, to your neighbors is absolutely extraordinary and greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mike.
All right, thanks, Laura. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Mike, I just want to, just sort of join in with Laura and others in sort of thanking you for your, your service to our community and to our nation and, and our state, and best of luck in your retirement from, from the city, and I'm sure we'll be seeing you around, and I appreciate all the work you've done on our behalf.
Thanks, Adam. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, I, I never actually had the pleasure of being a treasurer anywhere. I, I did, however, once, I was once or twice a CFO. And I have to say that Ron really hit it on the head, saying that the true testament of how great a job you've done is the fact that we never had any problems, and we never had any issues where, where crises, where you had to come to us to get things resolved. So I, I know that a lot of that, you know, you were kind enough to say a lot of that is based on the work that's done by city staff, and that's definitely true, but it's also true that it was because of your efforts as well. So thank you for all of that, and enjoy the next phase of your life.
Thank you, Mark. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo my colleagues' comments. Mike, thank you so much for your service to our city, our state, and our nation. Thirty-two years is a lot of time to be proud of, and we are just so deeply appreciative of your great work for the city, so thank you.
Thanks, Sarah, and we will get that proclamation corrected so that it says that you were elected eight times. I think that's quite an accomplishment. Okay, and next, we are going to move on to administering the oath to our incoming treasurer, Inga Tigo-Doorty. Crystal, are you going to be doing that?
Yes. Do I, Inga, are you there?
I am here.
There you are.
Hi, Inga.
Hello.
Okay, so this is my pleasure to administer the oath of, oath of office to you. If you can please raise your right hand. Inga Tigo-Doorty, do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties for which you are about to enter?
I do.
Thank you. You may now go ahead and sign your oath.
I have my oath here.
Okay.
For Crystal, it's unsigned. And now it's signed?
There you go. Great, thank you very much.
So, Crystal will have a copy of this, and she will countersign it.
Yes, and I am formally, virtually presenting to you this certification of election, so I will go ahead and give that to you when you drop off your oath with me in my office, okay?
Perfect.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to echo what my council, our council members had said about Mike and just amazing thirty-two years of service, and when I was on council and mayor, it was so nice not to ever have any issues related to financial difficulties. So I just wanted to take a minute to thank citizens of San Carlos for voting me in and their, and their confidence and trust in me in taking over this, this position, and staff is, you know, amazing as always. And then also, just wanted to thank my family for continuing to put up with me with all of my public service. Thank you all, and that's pretty much it.
Okay. Thank you, Inga. Any of my fellow council members have any welcoming comments they'd like to make? Laura, we'll start with you.
Thank you for stepping up in this important capacity, Inga. Ensuring fiscal accountability is a key priority. I'm sure your staff looks forward to your leadership as we continue that our city is on solid financial footing. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Laura. Next up is Adam.
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Inga, just want to congratulate you, and thanks for putting yourself forward for this, for the position. I look forward to working with you, and I'm, I know the city is in good hands, and look forward to having you as, I, I hope we maybe don't see you as much as we didn't see Mike, so I think that will be a good sign, so, thank you.
Very much so, yes.
All right, thanks, Adam. Mark?
Well, Inga, congratulations on, on coming back into public service. It's wonderful that you are willing to step forward and do that, and I have to particularly say that since I'm going to be stepping down and I'm going to be, you know, relying upon someone to make sure that the city finances stay in good shape, I'm glad you're there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Sarah?
Inga, welcome aboard again. I'm, I'm thrilled that you've signed back up for more public service, and I'm just really looking forward to working with you, so congratulations on your election.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right, thanks, Sarah, and I myself want to congratulate you, Inga, and, and welcome back to city government. You know, sometimes people wonder why we do this, but it's nice to have someone who's been around the city in, in the past and knows how, how things operate, and I'm sure you'll do a great job. You do have some big shoes to fill, probably literally and figuratively.
Yes, exactly, thanks, Ron.
All right, thank you, Inga. Okay, we are now going to move on to, oh, any public comments? Crystal, I don't see any hands raised?
I'm not seeing, oop.
Oh.
There goes one.
I did see one.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and admit Erica Tigo-Friedus. You should be able to un-mute yourself at this time.
Oh, that's my sister.
Hi, Inga, I'm so proud of you, and we know you do a wonderful job, and it's so exciting to see you back in service again. I know it's always a big, it's just such a rewarding experience, I'm sure, so I know you'll do a great job.
Thanks, Erica.
All right. Thank you, Erica.
You're welcome.
All right, let's see. Well, I, I don't see any more hands raised, so at this point, we're going to move on to item seventy, and which, we're going to be now recognizing our outgoing council member, Mark Olbert, and first up is Brian Perkins once again. Are you there, Brian?
Thank you, I actually pushed the mute button and it didn't work, I'm sorry. Councilman Olbert, when a member of the City Council leaves service, it's the custom of Congresswoman Spear to place a statement into the congressional record recognizing the service of that person. In this statement, and I'm just going to read two paragraphs in some, but in this statement it mentions that you've been a resident of this community for twenty-three years, and you've been an elected official for nineteen of those twenty-three years. It's an extraordinary contribution. During your time as a member of the school board, which was ten years, you also helped to restructure the special education program, and you helped to stabilize the district's finances. The resolution that you see before you, as you can see, has a lot of paragraphs, but I'm just going to read two of them at this point. It says, "Housing is Mark Olbert's constant concern. He asks important questions about whether the city has zoned enough land for housing in order to avoid the displacement of vulnerable residents as commercial development accelerates. He is passionate about equal economic opportunity and the need to find affordable housing for teachers, public safety personnel, store clerks, and all others who struggle to pay high rents in San Carlos. Mark Olbert is honest, thoughtful, and dogged in asking questions and getting answers. He seeks the long-term welfare of the entire community. He is brilliant and has a wonderful sense of humor. In short, he is an outstanding public servant. While public servant is a title that others may view as pedestrian, he treasures it as much as a rare gem. Let me invoke an amended phrase from a renowned science fiction philosopher, one of Mark's famous favorite philosophers, Master Yoda, and say, 'Mark, may the force of public opinion always be with you,' Congresswoman Jackie Spear. And Mark, on behalf of myself and my family, you really have put in a lot of hours, and we know how much it means to you to be part of the public well-being. You have a lot of opportunities in the future to make yourself heard, and we hope that you will. Good luck to you in the years ahead."
Thank you, Brian. Next up is Mario Rendon from Assemblymember Kevin Mullin's office.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mark, likewise, similar to what Brian mentioned, typically when a council member retires, it is the custom of the state legislators to request a, one of those big resolutions be prepared. COVID has thrown everything, turned everything upside down, but it is in the works. So as a placeholder, we do have this certificate. The resolution will be far more comprehensive in terms of all your accomplishments, and so I wanted just to throw in my personal note. Over the years, I have had the opportunity to get to know you over lunch at any number of great San Carlos eating locations. The conversation always ran over the allotted time. We, we went into any number of subjects. It demonstrated your curiosity, your interest in learning more, in seeking answers, seeking solutions, how you could apply that to the community in San Carlos. And so I think that inquisitiveness has been a defining feature for you, and certainly you never hesitated to pick up the phone, ask questions, send an email, and so, to me, that always demonstrated your commitment to constant learning, constant acquisition of information that then you could then turn around and put to better use. So I know that this is not by any means the end, but rather, this is just the start of another chapter, and I hope that your continued involvement in San Carlos and the broader San Mateo County community does continue. And so I'll just wrap it up by saying, the resolution will be forthcoming, it'll also include the delegation, which is basically also our newly-elected State Senator Josh Becker. So again, congratulations, Mark, well deserved.
Thank you, Mario. Next is Lena Silverman for Don Horsley's office.
Thank you so much, yes. I wanted to thank Mark Olbert from the Office of Supervisor Horsley and the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors for his years of dedicated service, and I wanted to say that they are so happy to present this resolution of thanks and appreciation.
All right, thank you, thank you, Lena. Next, I have a, a couple of things. I have a, a professional and then a personal, so I hope everyone will indulge me. The first, the professional is an official appreciation of Mark's service, and I don't want to shortchange or abbreviate any of this because Mark has been a very important part of this community for the last nineteen years. So, I'm going to read this so that people can get, really understand what he has meant to our community. Whereas Mark Olbert was first elected to the San Carlos City Council in November 2011 and re-elected in 2015, and led the council with distinction as mayor and chair in 2014 and 2019, and whereas Mark was a strong advocate for a more transparent participatory government and led the way to increasing the city's communication with the community through various channels, including social media, a new website, a community request management system, a series of newsletters, and an online forum, and whereas, as a proponent for preserving the city's resources, Mark Olbert devoted this significant amount of effort and time to pursuing our city's parks and facilities, such as Highlands Park, Cresview Park, and the Adult Community Center and Library, were all updated to provide the best services to our community. And whereas Mark triumphed over many challenges and contributed to the successful completion of several important projects, including the Palo Alto Medical Foundation, the Transit Village, Eastside Connect, Landmark Hotel, and the Wheeler Plaza Project, and whereas in his capacity as city council member, Mark represented the city on numerous boards and regional joint powers authorities, including Peninsula Congestion Relief Alliance, the South Bayside Waste Management Authority Board, Silicon Valley Clean Water Project, and the City and County Association of Governments in San Mateo County, to name a few. But whereas during his tenure on the council, Mark faced many difficult decisions, and despite tremendous opposition and pressure, always had the courage to speak for what he believed in. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Ron Collins, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, on behalf of the entire City Council and the San Carlos community, hereby commend and express sincere appreciation to Mark Olbert for his outstanding service to the San Carlos community for his many accomplishments on the City Council. This proclamation is presented with the good wishes from every member of the City Council and the City of San Carlos, presented this fourteenth day of December 2020. So, if you don't mind, I would like to give my own thoughts, and then we'll move on. So, tonight marks the end of nineteen consecutive years of public service in San Carlos for Mark, and I'd like to pay tribute to my colleague for the last nine years, actually nine and a half years, because it was nine and a half years ago that when I first decided to run for council, I learned who Mark was. And so, someone said, well, you should call Mark and see if you can get his endorsement. So I called him, and he, he just laughed, and he said, well, I'm going to run for council too. Now, so much for the endorsement. I didn't know it at the time, but if I had known Mark was going to work as hard as he did to get elected, I may never have pulled papers myself. But that's the thing with Mark, he works hard at everything he does. From our very first council meeting, it was very apparent that he had not only read the entire agenda packet, but had also talked with every staff member who had contributed to the agenda packet. And you could tell by his questions, from the get-go, he displayed his out-of-the-box style of thinking, as Jerry Hill put it at our last meeting. Occasionally, this out-of-the-box style might have been off the mark, no pun intended, but often it was, it was critical to the discussion, and it got the rest of us on the council, well, most of us, considering new questions we hadn't thought of before. And that's the beauty of having diverse viewpoints on the City Council. It's that critical thinking that makes us all better representatives of our community. Mark deserves a lot of credit for that. As a new council member back then, I was very wary that I, because I had witnessed unbecoming and very unprofessional behavior by previous council members toward each other during council meetings, and I had heard the same about other councils in neighboring cities, and I was determined not to let myself fall into that trap. And my resolve was tested very quickly during my first few months on the council, when we encountered the unexpected departure of one of our fellow council members. As we all worked through this issue, Mark and I gained a mutual respect for each other that has grown ever since. There have lots of time, there've been lots of times where our opinions differ, but many, many more times where we've agreed. It would take too much time for me to list all of our accomplishments, but I am proud of the work Mark and I have done together over the years. We've grown up together on the council, learned from each other, gotten in trouble together, and found a friendship along the way. Mark, I'm going to miss you. I will miss your drive, your intelligence, your goofy and sometimes mischievous sense of humor. On behalf of the people of San Carlos and myself, thank you for all your service to our, our community over the years. Stay well, my friend, and the best to you, Barbara, and your family.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay, you're so welcome, and you get to follow that with, with some comments of your own. And did you want to wait, or did you want to, I know you had some things later, I leave it up to you.
Well, thank you very much. Actually, I do have a few comments, mostly thank-yous now, if you wouldn't mind. Unfortunately, I'll Unfortunately, I'll probably, as my colleagues know, be a little wordier than Mike Galvin was, but he set, he set a standard that's almost impossible for me to even think about matching. So I want to thank everybody, and Ron in particular, from the bottom of my heart, for all those kind words and all the acolytes, because they are a tremendous send-off as I become a private citizen again. I am going to ask the council's forbearance if I can do the second phase of my remarks after the council reorganizes itself, because as a private citizen, I'd like the opportunity to be the first private citizen to address the new council. The remarks are admittedly a little longer than two minutes. They actually run about seven minutes, but they have visual aids, and I think you'll find them entertaining. So I'm hoping that that's something that people are willing to do. We'll come back to that at the end.
Well, that'll be up to the new mayor.
Or, or, if it's a majority of you now want to do it, then, you know, that'll be okay. So first off, let me start by thanking the community for entrusting me to make decisions on its behalf, first on the school board and then on the council. It was a wonderful experience and one that I will never forget and always cherish. A big thank you as well to city staff. These jobs are hard, but they'd be impossible without a strong team to advise us and execute our plans. Thank you for making me look smarter than I really am. Thank you too, as I mentioned, to Mike Galvin, our former city treasurer, for keeping our finances strong. And welcome back to Inga Teagle-Dowerty, who as treasurer will continue to do the same. I'd also like to spend a couple of seconds here to specifically thank my current colleagues, if you don't mind. Sarah, I admire the way you always balance sharp-eyed analytics with deep-seated compassion. I have to tell you, it's a rare combination on the council circuit, and one which serves San Carlos well. I hope you will always remain the heart of the council. Adam, you have the most amazing ability to discern and strike compromises when others get caught up in argument. I know I've relied on it a number of times to get us through some tricky situations. Let's continue our conversations about politics and the political process we both enjoy outside of the council chambers. Laura, Cameron Johnson once said, "No one on the council thought about things as thoroughly as I did." I leave knowing that that's no longer true, because you're on it. San Carlos benefits tremendously from the rigor with which you make decisions, and I applaud it. Ron, you will always be Mr. San Carlos to me. You epitomize the thoughtful and caring outlook that is a hallmark of our great community. I will miss working with you, but I'm glad the community will continue to benefit from your wise counsel. Just do yourself a favor and don't let the youngsters run you ragged. And John, not yet a colleague, but, and my one disappointment is not having the opportunity to serve with you. I'm glad your intellect, your drive, and most of all, your compassion will be on the dais. So thank you very much for all of that, and I really appreciate it. And as I said, I, I hope you'll grant me the forbearance to one-time treat you to a little seven-minute discussion, which I think you'll enjoy.
Thanks, Mark. And I realize that I will still be mayor when that opportunity comes up, so we will certainly, certainly accommodate that. Okay, we're going to move on now to the minister oaths of office to...
Mayor Collins, are we going to make comments now? Mark, is that okay?
I apologize. I totally skipped over that. Always, always looking at the agenda and forgetting stuff. Yes, Adam, please, go ahead.
All right. And Mark, I had some notes written, but then I just, more thoughts popped into my head, so the ad-lib parts may not be as smooth, so bear with me. But thank you, you know, first of all, for your many years of service to this community, not only as a school board member, but as a member of the city council. And I feel like I'm sort of following your footsteps, not quite for as long a tenure, but, you know, in doing some of these things as well. And I, you know, while I've only been on the council, we've been sort of direct colleagues for two years. We obviously spent a lot of time together talking when I was on the school board and you were on the city council, and we have our, I think, the issue of the land swap, which will always marry us together for many, many years to come. And I appreciate your, your passion and how you, you know, attack issues and continue to, to drive once, once you've made your decision and move forward with things. So thank you for that. But thank you for this, your, your, the spirited debates, the willingness to ask the questions and the out-of-the-box thinking. You have challenged us to look at issues differently, and you'll be missed on the council. I look forward to continuing our conversations without the restriction of the Brown Act and to become Facebook friends with you again. That will be nice. You've had a really positive influence on the community, and I think, you know, as your blog states, you have truly made your mark on San Carlos, and I wish you best of luck in your future endeavors, and I look forward to staying in touch.
Thanks, Adam. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark, it's such a remarkable achievement to have served our community for 19 years between the school board and the city council, and you have truly worked tirelessly on behalf of our residents, and we are just so grateful for your service. And on a personal note, I have learned a lot from you, Mark, and I appreciate the patience that you have shown and your willingness to sit down for the long conversations, and I'm very much looking forward to continuing those in the future and learning more from you and appreciating your counsel in the coming years. So I just, I wish you the best of luck, and thank you for everything.
Thank you, Sarah. Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Mark, thank you for your longstanding commitment in so many roles to our beloved village. Your care and concern for our community always showed through. I trust that you will continue to stay involved, and I look forward to working with you in these new capacities. Thank you so much for everything.
All right. We also have a couple of members of the public. I see Warren Lieberman has joined us. I guess he's not the mayor of Belmont anymore. Is that right, Warren?
Let me go ahead and grant him access to speak. Warren, you should be able to unmute yourself. There you go.
Mayor Collins, you have that exactly right. My comments tonight are solely as a council member, and you'll have to take whether they're important or not, that they're no longer a mayor. I'm no longer in the position of mayor. But maybe with hindsight, I can say, I was three times mayor, so at least my comments are educated by that. So if I may, so first of all, thank you very much for allowing me to participate in your council meeting tonight. Reorganization meetings are always wonderful. They're just full of lots of good things, recognizing folks who both put in enormous amounts of time for public service, as well as welcoming those who are about to. I've had the fortune to serve with Councilmember Olbert on the Silicon Valley Clean Water Commission, for which Belmont and San Carlos are two of the smaller entities, with West Bay and Ridwood CD being the two larger ones. I will, I really must tell you that our commission, Silicon Valley Clean Water, while it meets early in the morning, and I don't want to say out of the public eye, but certainly out of the mainstream of public interest for the most part, is the way I would describe it. It is extraordinarily important when you have commissioners on that body who are paying attention and doing their homework. Commissioner Olbert has always asked, as you noted tonight, penetrating and very comprehensive questions, and he keeps staff alert at that organization and truly adds an incredible, and he has added an incredible amount of value to... assuming style. And for anyone who's been a council member, they know that if you can ask the tough questions in a way that don't generate animosity, it's worth a lot. So council member, kudos to you for all you have done. When Mayor Collins says that you are, you've been a hard worker, it's a big understatement. Silicon Valley Clean Water has been better off for your efforts, and obviously, San Carlos as well, and quite frankly, again, Belmont and the whole member entity is better off. I will certainly miss your contributions in an incredible amount, and I really do want to wish you very good fortune as you take on new challenges. I know whatever you do, you're going to take on it with full commitment and force, so Godspeed to you, and, and again, thank you for all you've done for the community.
Thank you, Warren. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Warren, and thank you as well for your service to the City of Belmont for so many years. You are a very well-respected and well-liked member.
Appreciate that.
Okay. We have a couple more people to speak, but we, I was informed that Sarah MacDowell has a comment, I believe, from Charles Stone to read. So Sarah, would you like to go ahead?
I would, thank you. So this is from Belmont Mayor Charles Stone, and I'm going to preface this by saying, these are Charles's words, so I'm going to read them verbatim, Mark. Mark has served with great distinction as a local elected official in several roles for many years. That means he is either clinically insane or an honest-to-God public servant of the highest order. I believe it's the latter. Mark's acerbic wit was without parallel, and his passion was always clear. San Carlos is the better for leaders like him. Thank you from all of us in Belmont, the city of great living.
Oh, those are fighting words, Charles, but thank you.
Typical Charles.
Yes, it is.
Okay, we're going to move on to members of the public, but first up is our former mayor and council member, three-time mayor, I believe, and council member Bob Grisilli.
Bob, you should be able to...
Always technology-challenged.
Bob, you should be able to unmute right now.
Shall we come back to Bob?
I feel like he's going to get it any minute.
Mayor Collins, I just got a text from State Senator Becker. I guess he was, he was interested in making some remarks.
Yes.
He just was able to join back to the call.
I see him, and I'm going to, if you're there, Josh, why don't, why don't we proceed with your comments?
Senator Becker, you should be able to...
Great, thank you. Thanks for joining, or thanks for having me join. I just wanted to add my congratulations and thanks to Mark for your service. Remember when I was first getting involved, and I was, this was back in 2009, 2010, and I went around and met with all local officials, and, you know, we were blessed to have so many wonderful local officialnesses in this area, but Mark just stood out, his thoughtfulness, his innovation, the depth with which he has thought about these issues and, you know, issues that I thought about. He already had the data on all the, and had researched the issues, and just a tremendous role model and example of a fantastic public servant. So I just wanted to add my thanks to Mark for all his service, and if it's appropriate, I'll just also add my congratulations to John at this moment as well, really excited for him coming in and ran a terrific campaign. And Ron, also congratulations on, on your reelection, and I look forward to working with the new council. But Mark, most of all, thanks to you for your service.
Thank you. I, I really am excited to be able to say thank you, Senator. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Now, Bob Grisilli, are you back with us?
I think I am.
There you are. Go ahead.
So I won't be coming back three times. First of all, I wanted to congratulate John for running a great campaign and winning. He has big shoes to fill of Mark's, and he, I don't know that you'll be able to ask as many questions as Mark did, but keep that, keep at it. And I'd also like to congratulate Inga for running a great campaign. Oh, she didn't have to run a campaign. To, and being elected as city treasurer, she's going to do, she's going to do a great job. It was my honor to serve with her on planning, as well as city council, and so congratulations, Inga. And last, but certainly not least, Mark, we served together for seven years, I believe, and, you know, like, like I think Ron said earlier, we sometimes didn't always vote the same way, but we always worked toward the same goal. And you have been a tireless, as has been said before, public servant in the school board and the city council, and the City of San Carlos is much better off because of the service that you put in for 19 years, and congratulations to you, and best of everything to your family and yourself in your next endeavor. So congratulations, Mark, and good job.
Thank you, Bob. That means a lot.
Thank you, Bob. Next up is Danielle La Campagna. I hope I pronounced that right.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you so much for everything, Mark, when it hit me like a brick four years ago to get involved in San Carlos. I was so grateful you're on the council. You've always been accessible to residents like me, who, there's been many of us who've been more engaged last four years than others, and really appreciate your boldness on the council, your, your openness to discussing things with us, of course, your thoughtfulness and impact around things like the welcoming city proclamation and the support of the gun buyback programs. But just as a, as a regular old resident, I really appreciated engaging in this community with you there.
Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you, Danielle. Next is Karen Molinari. Karen, are you with us?
Karen, you should be able to unmute right now.
She disappeared, so why don't we come back to Karen, if she can reconnect? Carrie Dubois, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Mark. I'm so glad to be here with you for your last city council meeting. I want to tell the audience, I first met Mark when he was a volunteer parent at Arundel, and my kids were in elementary school. He was an extraordinary volunteer. I most remember him for helping with technology, when most people were just learning about the new tools. He was helping staff members, teachers, as well as children. He then ran for a seat on the San Carlos School Board, and I remember so much about his work. I do remember his advocacy for special education children. I remember his brains that were used when there was a $2 million budget deficit. I was, at that time, involved in the San Carlos Educational Foundation as president, and Mark was also highly involved in our many fundraisers, especially the early days of the auction. So I then ran for a seat on the San Carlos School Board, and in the very beginning, I didn't quite agree with Mark on a couple of things, so we sparred a bit. But as what always happens, when there's a little bit of tension, you tend to learn the most. So I can say, I have worked with many people over my long, I've been a community volunteer for, I date myself, about 30 years. Mark is at the very top of the list for people that I've learned the most from. So I'm so grateful to you for your work with children in our community, work in education, work in city government. Thank you, Mark. And I also want to say thank you to Barbara. You cannot do this work unless you have a very, very supportive spouse, and there's also a long list of things that Barbara has done in our community. So thanks to both of you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Carrie. Karen, are you back? Karen Molinari.
Karen, you should be able to unmute yourself. Okay. There you go.
Can we now? Yes, we can.
Thank you. Sorry, having technical difficulties on my end as well. But Mark, I wanted to thank you for your longtime support, leadership, and service to our community. We are so much the better for it, and I appreciate your years of service, and as was, as Carrie mentioned, your family's willingness to share you and your talents with us. You will definitely be missed on council, and I wish you all the best on your next endeavors, and just want to tell you how much I appreciate your willingness to talk about any issue and, and the difference you have made for our community. So thank you again.
Thank you, Karen.
Sorry about that. Next is Kathy Palmer Lohan.
Hello, this is Kathy. Uh, I just wanted to thank you so much for your work on the school board and work in the early days of SCAP with Barbara. Um, we are honored to, to work, to stand on your shoulders, as they say, and continue the good work, and to recognize you every year in our Honorary Service Award. Thank you so much for your, your total dedication to our kids at our schools and your continued advocacy. We really, really appreciate it. Good luck.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Kathy. Uh, next is Amy Buckmaster.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Howard. Can you, or, I said Mayor Howard, boy, I don't know where I am today. Thank you, Mayor Collins. Um, good evening, um, and honorable members of the City Council. I'm Amy Buckmaster, and I'm Redwood, uh, CEO of the Redwood City, Samhain County Chamber, and I'm now proudly serving the community of San Carlos. Um, we really want to express our sincere appreciation to Councilmember Mark Olbert for your ongoing commitment to serving the community of San Carlos throughout your terms on the City Council. I personally look forward to working with you, um, as a chamber member in the future to come for San Carlos and our small businesses. Um, we also want to extend our congratulations to Mayor Ron Collins on your reelection, and to Councilmember John Dugan on your election to the City Council. We look forward to your leadership within the community. We are very excited about the new partnership between the Chamber and the city. We look forward to working closely, very closely together, as we navigate our way through the many challenges and great opportunities for San Carlos. Many happy holidays, and as you've all heard me many times, please shop local, please don't buy on Amazon, support our small businesses and our restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Um, the next speaker, Mark, I've someone I think you know. Um, I will let her introduce herself, but her first name is Caroline.
Uh-oh. Oh, no.
Oh, no, is right. Hey, Dad, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine, sweetheart.
All right, well, congratulations, Dad, all the way from New York City. Uh, I grew up in San Carlos, obviously. I've been there almost as long as you have, for obvious reasons. And, uh, I've seen how hard you've worked over the years with everything you've done for the city. And I just, I know that you may not be on the council anymore, but it's not gonna be the last we'll see of you, if I know anything about your tenacity and your dedication. So congratulations. You had a good run.
Thank you, sweetheart.
Thank you, Caroline, Caroline, and your laugh is just like your dance.
So is her sense of humor, Ron. Be careful.
Um, last but not least, and, and I, I apologize to Seth. I've been saving him for as the, the last to speak, uh, because I know Seth and, uh, and Mark served together on the school board. So, um, Seth, the floor is yours.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and honorable councilmembers. Um, I appreciate you giving me a moment. I first also want to obviously congratulate Inga and John and Ron on your reelection as well. And of course, uh, congrats also to Mr. Brian Perkins on his well-deserved, uh, honor recognition. That's, that's great. He absolutely deserves at least that. Uh, but I did want to spend a few minutes, or maybe two minutes, talking about my friend, Mark. Um, I want to join in what has clearly been a large chorus of people thanking you for all your service, obviously both, um, on the City Council, but of course, on the school board, where we had the privilege, where I had the privilege of working beside you. I won't, uh, like others, I won't list all of your accomplishments. I think those are well documented. Um, I do just want to say obviously that the community owes you much gratitude for that dedication and service. And I want to talk more about, um, what I most admire about you, and what interesting about Mark, and, and, and my observation that all his years of public service, ones that I was in more directly involvement or just an observer of, Mark always started with the big picture, right? No opinion he ever voiced, or any decision he ever made was sort of done in isolation. He always, uh, always put them in the context of a larger abstraction, right? And I really appreciated that. Mark fundamentally believes in government and believes in its power to make people's lives better, and particularly now, that's just something we sorely need more of, right? Um, so he never really thought about decisions that were right in front of him, right? He was thinking about even just how representative democracy writ large, you know, could be more representative and, and more democratic. Um, and although Mark, you know, is absolutely a student of history and politics, I always observed that he was never constrained by them. He always understood that being an effective leader meant balancing, you know, on the one hand thoughtful analysis, good judgment, and even forceful arguments at times, um, balancing that all with the art of the possible, which is politics. Um, and, but it was always with the goal of doing the most good for the most number of people. Um, and he understood, as any good Star Trek fan would, that the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. Um, and on a personal note, I wanted to remark how much, Mark, I valued our friendship over the last fifteen years or so. Uh, we accomplished a lot together. We challenged each other. We learned a lot from each other. We laughed a lot. And no conversation with Mark Olbert is pedestrian. Every time we talk, whether it's about local issues or not, inevitably somewhere within the conversation is weaved principles of economics, psychology, sociology, history, or even physics. That's a conversation with Mark. Um, so the city's gonna miss your big thinking, but I'm confident that, just like you did with the school board, you're leaving the City Council a better place than you found it. Your impact will have a very long tail. And I don't know what your future holds, other than I suspect you may take more motorcycle trips. Um, but I look forward to watching what else you do, and of course, you know, sharing big thoughts together with you. So thank you very much for the time. Congratulations.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you, Seth. Um, wow, that's quite a tribute, quite a long list of, of people who had some really wonderful comments, and I want to, again, thank you, Mark. I, I'm gonna miss you, uh, but I, I'll see you around town. We'll, uh, we'll definitely, uh, we'll hook up for wine or coffee or whatever, uh, when we can. So, all right, uh, I don't see any other speakers left, um, on this, so we are gonna move on to administering the oath of office to actually myself and to John Dugan. And if everybody will indulge me for a minute, I need to switch, uh, switch machinery. So I'm gonna, uh, mute myself and stop my video and go to my iPad, cause-
Just for the benefit of the public, Ron, uh, will be, um, sworn in by Gail Collins, his wife, so they're moving over to another computer, so they have a better, so we all have a better visual here. There you go.
All right. Can everybody see me? And see Gail?
Yes, thank you, Ron.
We can see you.
Okay, good. I just wanted to hear a voice.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay.
Okay, um, please raise your right hand. Do you, Ron Collins, solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
Will you please sign?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Dan. All right.
Congratulations, Ron.
I'm going to return now to the other device and continue. Okay.
Hello, Ron?
Can everybody see me?
Ron, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, um, next up is, and thank you, boy. Um, we are gonna move on to administering the oath of office to Councilmember John Dugan. And Crystal, I believe you are going to do the honors.
I am. Can, can everyone hear me okay?
Thank you, everyone. I'm gonna invite my family in to join me, uh, to sit next to me. So my, uh, very supportive wife, Julia, and my, uh, my girls, Joy and Jackie, and my son Jake, so. And I need my right hand.
Can, can John, can you hear me okay? Hello, John?
Crystal, uh, I think is gonna join us, moment, any second now.
Audio issue.
She has-
She's, uh, audio issue, she says.
Okay. Should I deputize my wife here?
Can you hear me okay?
I think you, I think- Yes, I could do it.
I think you might have been meant to do it, Julia. Here it is. Do you want to administer it?
Uh, okay, I start reading this.
Yeah, just read that, my oath.
I, John Dugan, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
I do. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, John, and congratulations, and welcome to the council.
Thank you very much. I think I have to sign. I will do that now.
Yes, go ahead, and you want to do your signature now? Let, let's make it official.
Sure. Great. Signed, sealed, and soon to be delivered.
Signed, sealed, and soon to be delivered. Congratulations and welcome to the council. And, uh, congratulations to the, the entire Dugan family.
Yeah.
Uh, your, your dad's got a lot on his plate coming up, kids. He's gonna need a lot of support.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, guys.
Let's see, we, uh, we're gonna, I'm just gonna say a couple of things. I, I know I've talked a lot tonight. I just, uh, first of all, I want to thank everybody who voted for me and returning me, uh, to the council. Uh, I very much appreciate serving the city.
Thank you very much. That meant a lot. I appreciate it.
As I said, it's, it's an honor to, uh, serve San Carlos, the city where I grew up, the city of my youth, and city where I, I met my wife and where my children, uh, went to school, and I am happy to continue to serve on the council. And with that, um, John, did you have some comments that you would like to, uh, make?
Yeah, sure. Um, I appreciate that so much, Ron, and, uh, uh, thank you. I really do appreciate it. Uh, I just want to say what a tremendous and fundamentally humbling experience it was for me to run for public office, uh, which is really quite a journey, and especially in 2020 with so much going on in the world and so many unique challenges. I mostly just feel very thankful for all the support I received from so many people and in so many different amazing ways throughout my campaign. It really meant a lot to me personally, but I also came to understand and really appreciate that everyone was pitching in and helping me so much because they care and truly love San Carlos and the wonderful community we all share. I feel very honored to have received all that support, and that love of San Carlos is exactly what I plan to reflect throughout my service on the City Council. Thank you so much for that. And I do want to make a few call-outs. Uh, first to my mother, Judy Dugan Goodrum, who's, uh, with us this evening. Uh, when I think back, I get asked sometimes, how did you think about running for office, or, uh, what, what first inspired you? Uh, um, boy, you know, I just remember as, as a boy, uh, going with her when she would vote, and she never missed an election. She was very beautiful and very, you know, did her homework. And I just remember going with her, literally, you know, this was back when you'd pull the lever and the curtain would close, and you'd, you'd, I think, punch in your vote and pull the curtain again. It would open, and I just had a huge impression on me. And I just remember going, uh, many times with her for that when I was very young. And, uh, and I just always was impressed. This was an important thing and, and solemn duty, and I think that stuck with me. I'm sure it was part of why I ended up studying government and law. And, uh, um, and just from the moment I announced I was, uh, gonna run for this office, uh, my mom has been my strongest supporter, and her enthusiasm, uh, really, uh, meant a lot to me through all this. So I love you a lot, Mom, and, uh, love being your son. And my wife, Julia, uh, so patient with me through this process, uh, was, uh, a long season of campaigning, uh, and she just, uh, was there beside me and very supportive. Uh, and my children, Jake, Jackie, and Julia, you guys just met them, uh, they were so enthusiastic. I was really surprised. Uh, I think my wife was appropriately skeptical, you know, she knows how busy I am, uh, but my kids were just like, if I had any doubts, they, uh, sealed the deal. They, uh, they, they just were thrilled I was gonna go for it. Uh, they know I think about, uh, issues a lot, and I think they just know I, uh, you know, probably was supposed to, uh, uh, jump into the ring, if you will. Uh, I love you very much, family, and appreciate all the support. And my campaign team, boy, did I get lucky there. Uh, Andy Klein, uh, my campaign manager, former mayor of San Carlos, and just a consummate, uh, San Carlos insider. Uh, such a strong campaign manager who I, I mostly listen to. And, uh, I'll say, from the moment, uh, we met up and shook hands, uh, on that picnic table on Laurel Street, uh, everything just started falling into place, uh, for my campaign. And, and I really thank him so much for all he did and all he taught me through this process. And Laura Tuchel, my communications director, uh, also knows everyone in town, uh, just so dedicated, so tireless, uh, cares so much about San Carlos and our community. And right out of the gate, uh, you know, my campaign just looked good, uh, looked like we had a staff of ten or something like that, and we didn't. We just had Laura and her tremendous talent and work ethic. Uh, she even, uh, uh, sometimes made me look cool on social media, which, uh, it does not come naturally. So, uh, thank you so much, Laura. I really, really appreciate that. And, uh, Brian Best, my treasurer, uh, we borrowed him from the, uh, San Carlos Community Foundation. Thank you so much. Uh, he really just did a great job, uh, in, you know, a pretty thankless role. So, uh, thank you for that. Kept us out of trouble. Um, and, uh, I really appreciate all that effort. Uh, truly, I have the campaign dream team. Uh, appreciate it so much. Just want to mention my next-door neighbor, John Buchanan. He was a mayor of ours in, uh, uh, mid to late eighties. Uh, when I moved in, uh, I just remember chatting with him. This was, uh, you know, fifteen years ago, and just I was like, wow, I moved in next to the former mayor. How cool. And I learned about all he did for the city and how much he cared, and just over the years, I'm sure, uh, he definitely inspired me, uh, to think about getting more involved. Mark Olbert, uh, boy, uh, everyone said it so well tonight. Twenty years of public service, uh, huge, uh, shoes for me to fill. Um, and I just thank you. Uh, you were the one who said, boy, you really should think about running, John. And, and I really had to go and think about it. It wasn't, uh, on my radar for 2020, uh, and I certainly, uh, uh, wouldn't want to be running against you. Uh, so, uh, I really appreciate your support, your mentoring, your, uh, just, uh, uh, great direction at every term. Uh, thank you so much. And it is a true regret of mine that, uh, we won't, uh, be serving, uh, together, but I know, uh, our service to San Carlos, uh, together has not ended. Uh, we all look forward to seeing what you'll be doing next. Uh, Adam Rack, uh, I remember first person I spoke with, uh, uh, when I was first thinking about the Planning Commission. Uh, I know, uh, Adam and I, we go back quite a ways, uh, um, and, you know, he got me thinking about, hey, you know, planning'd be fun, be interested, interesting, uh, plugged me into some folks. I got a good idea. And then when I started this campaign, a very early endorsement, appreciated that, and just some fantastic introductions for me. So that, thank you very much for that, Adam. Uh, that support meant a lot. Uh, Sarah McDowell, another very early endorsement and just so much help and support. I remember that afternoon, we spent walking your neighborhood, meeting your neighbors. Uh, that was just, uh, really fun. Uh, your, uh, public spirit is contagious, and, uh, and I hope I caught a little bit of it. Um, Laura Palmer Lohan, uh, great, great example of community outreach and service and dedication. Um, I so look forward, uh, to your leadership in the coming year, and just really appreciate all the support and, uh, guidance you've given me so far. So thank you for that. And, uh, Mayor Collins, Ron, uh, boy, just thank you. Um, you, you know, uh, I certainly never felt like I was running against you this fall. I really felt like I, uh, was, uh, running with you in many ways and, and, and was always just hoping for a close second, cause, uh, you, you truly are, I think Mark said it, you truly are Mr. San Carlos, and, uh, and, and you've just- And you've just been so grace, gracious and supportive of my efforts and very welcoming. And that means a lot. And I just, I really do, I just feel embraced and supported by my colleagues. And it means a lot to me coming into this position. This really is a great council of tremendous public servants. I feel very fortunate for joining them as we take on the issues and tremendous opportunities facing San Carlos in these difficult times. I also wanna quickly thank David Tom and JT Eden, who both stepped up and ran inspired campaigns against Ron and I. San Carlos deserved a choice, and they made me organize and work hard, and I certainly couldn't take anything for granted. San Carlos got a better result and a much better-prepared council member because of their guts and effort. I wish both of them well and hope they will continue to pursue public services. We need thoughtful, hard-working people like them who care so much about their community. And a big thank you to everyone else who supported me, whether it was endorsements from electeds like Josh Becker, Don Horstley, David Pine, and Kevin Mullen, or San Carlos community leaders like my fellow Planning Commissioners, Brian Perkins, Gene and Bob Danner, Carol Elliott, Neil Layden, Tom Davids, Don Eden, Bob Gresseli, Minette Meredith, Linda Tuchel, and so many others. Thank you so much. And, but mostly, I wanna thank the hundreds of people in San Carlos who so generously opened their doors when this crazy guy came around knocking in the midst of this rather awful year and had good, heartfelt conversations with me. And for the record, all those conversations were outside, fully masked, and socially distant. But when I started walking the neighborhoods and knocking on doors, I honestly had no idea what to expect. But I soon learned what an awesome privilege that really is, truly the very best part of campaigning. So many wonderful talks where I heard people's concerns and many very real struggles. And I also heard a lot of hope and optimism that better days are just around the corner, which was always inspiring to me and also something I firmly believe as well. But mostly, I saw the beauty and strength of our community and the deep love so many of us feel for San Carlos. And again, that love is exactly what I plan to reflect throughout my service on the city council. And without a doubt, the real work begins now, and we certainly have plenty of deep issues and real challenges in front of us, but also many tremendous opportunities as our community continues to develop and thrive. I look forward to working together with Jeff and his excellent staff, my new colleagues on the council, and of course, all of you and all the other citizens of San Carlos to keep this a city of good living. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, John. That was very well said, and many of the people you mentioned, I could also include in my thanks. We have a great community that has supported everybody. And also, my thanks to David Tom and JT Eden for running. I think it's amazing that we have people that are willing in this environment to step up and ask to represent the community, especially the JT. I'm really proud of you, you know, for your on. I'm very, very proud of you for running. You're a real example to young people. We need more young people in city government. We just actually had a 21-year-old elected in San Francisco. So you're gonna be a formidable force in the future, and I hope you stay in local government and public service. Okay, any, I have, let's see, any members of the, my fellow council members like to make any comments before we move on? Adam, you're up first.
Thank you. And we'll do public comment for this also. I have a public comment to read afterwards as well. Or should I do it? Okay, okay. I'll save that one for later. So Ron, thank you for your leadership as mayor during this unique and challenging time for our city. Your calm and steady hand made a difference, and we are in a better place as a community forward. I saw it firsthand, serving on the downtown subcommittee with you and just, you know, walking down, talking to other restaurants and to the stores and businesses to see your compassion and how much you value our community. So congratulations on your reelection. I look forward to continuing to work with you for many, hopefully, many years to come. And for John, I will say congratulations on your election following a well-run campaign. I know from your work on the Planning Commission that you will be a hard-working and thoughtful member of the council. I'm glad to have your voice to joining the council. And I will say that, you know, we've shared a stage together, and now we'll get to share the dais together. So looking forward to working with you.
Very good. Thank you, Adam.
All right. Thank you, Adam. Laura?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. I'd like to start by thanking David Tom and JT Eden for running, showing the courage to throw your hat in the ring. And I recognize it's never easy to lose a race of something that you're so interested in, being a part of. Nonetheless, I think your participation in the effort really brought a conversation to the community that was much needed and very much appreciated. And I echo my colleagues' comments in suggesting that I hope that you do continue to stay involved. Mayor Collins, congratulations on your reelection. I'm so pleased that the community will continue to benefit from your experience and commitment. And Ron, I look forward to benefiting from your wise advice and counsel. And John Dugan, congratulations on a successful campaign and welcome to the dais. Your experience on the Planning Commission will be of great value, and I look to, I very much look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Laura. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Laura. Sarah?
Thank you, Ron. I just want to express my heartfelt gratitude to you, Ron, for your year of service as mayor. You truly have guided our city with a steady hand through a very difficult year. I've learned so much from you, and I've always appreciated your advice. And I'm very much looking forward to serving with you, and congratulations on your reelection. And John, you've worked so hard as a Planning Commissioner, and I think that your experience will be such a valuable addition to our council as we tackle unprecedented change and development coming to San Carlos in the coming years. So congratulations and welcome aboard. And I too want to thank JT Eden and David Tom for running as well and putting their, putting their all out there. It was a really fascinating campaign to watch. So just looking forward to the year to come. So thank you both.
Thank you, Sarah. We do have a member of the public who wants to make a comment. Giselle Hale, are you there? Can you hear me?
I am indeed. Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I wanted to say congratulations to you, Mayor Collins. You are, you know, San Carlos is a special neighbor to us in Redwood City. And I think COVID really taught us about how we all had to work together, especially in this hard time. I think of just the example of always going to the farmer's market in Redwood City. And this year, we didn't have one, and so San Carlos became our farmer's market. We really had to work together to solve problems. COVID was a true test of leadership, and I think you, Mayor Collins, really stood up to that test. So I'm grateful that your public chose to reelect you. I also wanted to say thank you to outgoing member, Olbert. Though we didn't get to work closely together, I know that you did so much for your community. And I wanted to offer my welcome and congrats to the incoming member, Mr. Dugan. I also share a background in the Planning Commission. I personally am biased and think it's the absolute best place to start out. And I wish you much success, and I look forward to meeting you in person in the near future. And I know it's a future item, but I wanted to also offer early congrats to the incoming mayor and vice mayor, who I've gotten to know and worked with very closely. And I think they're gonna do a fantastic job, and I look forward to partnering with both of them, with members Palmer Lohan and McDowell. So thank you so much, and good luck for the year ahead. It'll be another challenging one, and I know that we'll stick it out together.
Thank you, Giselle. And in case I forgot to mention it, Giselle is a Redwood City City Council member and has done an outstanding job and always impresses me with how many things she gets involved in and cares very deeply and passionately about. So thank you, Giselle. We're gonna move on next to Warren Lieberman. Warren?
Thank you, Ron. Or Mayor Collins for the next few minutes, I suppose I should say. This will probably be my, this is not probably, this will be my last time at public comment. I'm not gonna go for third time's the charm. So I may do a little things out of order, and I hope you will forgive me for that. But I want to, first of all, congratulate Councilmember Dugan on getting elected. You are joining a phenomenal council, and I hope that there are regional opportunities where we get a chance to work together. I would look forward to that. So again, congratulations. Congratulations to Ingetil Darty as well for her desire to serve the city on the treasurer. And I will say finally, maybe not finally, Mayor Collins, you and I have had this distinction of serving as mayor during the year of COVID, I guess. It has been anything but an unusual, a business-as-usual year. It has been said already by a number of people, and I will not belabor the point, but you have guided San Carlos with a very steady hand. And it is difficult for me to think of others who would have done as good a job as you've done. I think you deserve an enormous amount of credit for keeping San Carlos going, whether it was running the meetings, whether it is just regional participation. But beyond all that, I gotta tell you, I have so enjoyed working with you at the regional level when we've had the chance to do so. I don't know who San Carlos is going to appoint for the Silicon Valley Clean Water. And I know regardless of which appointment is made, you're all gonna be great. But if it happens to be you, I would be thrilled, just because it would give us a chance to work together more closely than we've had the opportunity to do so. And with that, I will also just offer my congratulations to whomever the council chooses as the incoming mayor and vice mayor. Again, Belmont looks forward to working with you as a sister city. So thank you very much for allowing me to offer a few additional comments.
Thank you, Warren. And as always, it's great to have you on, even if I can't see you. And your comments are very much appreciated, and likewise with you. You've done an outstanding job for Belmont, and every time you're mayor, Belmont achieves great things. So, but thank you again. We have, at this point, we talked about.
I have one more public comment, Mayor Collins, that someone asked me to read.
Oh, okay, yes, yes.
Before I do that, I would just, I was remiss in my remarks also of not thanking JT Eden and David Tom for running for the election as well. I know when I ran and Sarah and Lauren and I ran, it was, it's always better to have a competitive election, and it does make you a better, better member, and I appreciate their running. And so Mayor, Belmont Mayor Charles Stone has decided to spread the wealth around and let me read his comments this time, like Sarah got to read them earlier. So I will read from Charles, and these are directed to you, Mayor Collins. And again, these are Charles's words, not my words, not mine, and I don't disagree with them at all. But Ron led the city through an unprecedented pandemic with his classic grace and aplomb. Along the way, he spent hours and hours on the Samtrans and Caltrain boards, dealing with the devastating effects of the pandemic on transit. He also stood shoulder to shoulder with other San Mateo County leaders to resist attempts by San Francisco and San Jose to keep Measure RR off the ballot. Because of that effort, Measure RR made it to the ballot and passed giving Caltrain a lifeline in the short term and its first-ever dedicated revenue source in the long term. Well done, Mayor Collins.
Thank you, Adam, and thank you to Charles for using Adam as your proxy. Okay, we're gonna now hear from Mark once more, Mark Olbert. Now, sad to say, former member, former council member, Mark, but take it away, Mark.
Well, but now I get to say what I really think, Ron. No, I'm just kidding. I did promise that I have some visual aids on this thing, and hopefully, Crystal, everything is set up so you can queue it up. Thanks for letting me reflect on my public career as you continue a journey stretching back almost 100 years. Some retiring electeds like to tell their colleagues what to do. I think that's silly. Anyone feeling that strongly should have run for reelection. I'd just like to leave you with a few ideas to think about. The first stems from the puzzle I sent you. For the benefit of the audience, here it is. The challenge is to figure out how to connect all nine dots with no more than four lines. The solution involves thinking outside a box, which most people see in the picture but actually isn't there. There is also a three-line and, believe it or not, a one-line solution as well. All depends on not making assumptions about supposed constraints. I ran into this puzzle years ago and have never forgotten it because it highlights a common feature of challenging problems. Solving them often requires looking at things differently. Gaining new perspectives is sometimes ascribed to genius, but that's a cop-out. Anyone can learn to do it. It simply involves seeing the world for what it is rather than what we think it is. We all know of someone who is widely considered a genius but personally attributed his insights to asking simple questions. If you study how Einstein developed his special theory of relativity, you'll quickly notice something odd. The empirical data it's based on was discovered 18 years before he published his revolutionary work. For all those years, smart people worked hard to fit the data into what they'd been taught without success. Einstein simply asked, how can we look at the world differently to explain the data? A simple shift in perspective with profound consequences. Challenging ourselves to see the world clearly is important in everything we do, but it's nowhere more important than in leading a representative democracy because the simplest public decisions often involve the interests of thousands of people. One afternoon while knocking on doors during my first council campaign, I stopped dead in my tracks up on Melundy Drive because seeing San Carlos laid out before me hit me with a troubling thought. How in the world can anyone hope to represent the views of all those people? The answer is, no one can. All anyone can do is use their best judgment, their compassion, and their empathy to inform their decision-making and hope the results do more good than harm while remaining ready to change course. But what defines good? There are as many opinions about that as there are people. How do you choose among alternatives when there is no common yardstick? There were many times on the dais when I longed for the simplicity of life in the private sector. For all the challenges I faced back then, making choices was relatively simple. All I had to do was figure out which one made the most money. The public sector doesn't have anything like that. Which is more valuable? Another park, more housing, or better roads and mass transit? Ask a thousand people and get a thousand answers. But let me propose something I believe does lead to better decisions. Which choice would make the most people want to be part of our community? Here's why I think it's useful. Bill Gates did not get to be the richest man in the world by personally writing and selling a few copies of Windows to a handful of wealthy people. He did it by connecting thousands of employees, vendors, and others to millions of people who could benefit from having access to computing power. In the process, everyone's lives were enriched. Yet for that to happen, those individuals all needed each other. Communalism and individualism can be mutually reinforcing, benefiting everyone. Oddly, the value of high-functioning communities is often overlooked by individuals. For example, the need for personal safety is commonly given as the reason people form communities and governments. It's a defensive choice. Living among others helps shield us from life's challenges. But communities can offer much more. While there's safety in numbers, thriving, desirable communities let people lead better, fuller lives by interacting with each other. Safety may be the reason for forming communities and governments, but the value proposition is that they can dramatically enhance everyone's lives. Consequently, decisions which make more people want to live in a community make its residents both safer and better off. Naturally, creating a desirable community may concern existing residents. They're generally okay with things as they are, or they'd have left. They may also want their government to consider only local viewpoints when making decisions. But electeds owe their constituents more than just a good set of ears. They owe them a duty to exercise good judgment, even if that means going against local perspectives because they want us to secure their future as part of a larger world. Because they want us to secure their future as part of a larger world. The people will fire us if we do too many things they don't like. But they'll also fire us if we don't do enough things, even things they aren't keen on today, to keep the community healthy and thriving in a constantly changing world. Examples of this conundrum abound. A decade ago, the San Carlos School Board had to redraw its attendance area boundaries. That's a third rail of public school politics, a sure way to get a lot of people angry at you regardless of what you do. One man came before the board and excoriated it for its choice. He was not satisfied with the district's analysis and the explanations he was given. But a year later, something amazing happened. He came back and apologized for his earlier remarks, acknowledging his family was better off because of the change. Part of leadership is figuring out what path to take. That involves a lot of listening. Another part is selling choices to the community. That involves a lot of talking. But an equally important part is doing what needs to be done to adapt the community to a changing world. That requires courage. As you chart our future, I hope you'll remember this. Challenge your assumptions, particularly when you think you've got everything figured out. Challenge people who tell you something can't be done, or it'll take too long or cost too much. Your expert advisors will always know more than you do. But remember what Einstein showed his peers. Simply accepting what you've been taught can constrain thinking, preventing problems from being solved. And consider weighing hard choices based on which ones make the most people want to live in San Carlos. Because just as individuals are better off being part of a larger community, San Carlos benefits from being part of the larger region and the world, open to outside viewpoints and people. Thank you all and the entire San Carlos community for a wonderful two decade ride. I wish the council well and look forward to seeing where San Carlos goes next.
Thank you, Mark, and be careful on that motorcycle.
Will do.
Okay, before we move on to our next item, which is where we choose a few mayor, I just, I had a few thoughts that I wanted to share with everybody. First of all, I want to thank my fellow council members for choosing me to represent you and our city during the last year as your mayor. It's truly an honor and a privilege to be chosen for this position. During my first term as mayor five years ago, I was excited but nervous about being in the position. And it took a while to get my sea legs. During that year, we had a contentious ballot measure to, to purchase the Black Mountain site and hopefully turn it into a park. And we also opened a small dog park in front of City Hall. As it turned out, the dog park produced the most emotion among our residents. So I was pretty confident that this time around was going to be a pretty quiet year. Well, not so much. 2015 was pretty tame in comparison. As everyone knows, the pandemic turned everything upside down. There's no playbook for this, no script. Running meetings remotely has been a true adventure, but I discovered so much more by going through it. And here's what I learned. People are much nicer than we thought. People are more generous than we thought. People are more understanding than we thought. And we are more creative than we thought. And we are more adaptive than we thought, and we are stronger than we thought. This pandemic produced a community spirit that has brought not only San Carlos closer together, but the entire county of San Mateo. We are truly stronger together and we should never forget that. I also want to recognize and thank our amazing city staff who go about their work quietly every day. They do the hard work that we ask them to, and the council gets the credit for it. These are competent, professional, dedicated and caring individuals that make this city function so well. I also want to say a special thanks to Crystal Moye, who is the gold standard of city clerks. In addition to all the other things that she does on a daily basis, what she does to keep council meetings running smoothly is truly amazing. She's a quick learner who made a difficult transition to a Zoom format look almost effortless. And I want to thank Jeff Malpe and Tara Peterson, who in so many subtle and not so, sometimes not so subtle ways, have helped me lead the city this year. I could not have done it without your knowledge, your wisdom and your insight. To my fellow council members, thank you for your support, your respect, your friendship, your patience with my meeting management style and your help in making sure I didn't forget something during our meetings. I've enjoyed every minute. There's no question that this has been a difficult year for everyone. But I want to thank the citizens of San Carlos for stepping up and helping out their neighbors. There are just too many incredible stories of selfless acts of kindness to relate here. But they all make me proud to live in a city that lives its vision statements, to be a vibrant, inclusive and business friendly community. Finally, as I return to being a regular council member again, I want to thank my wife, Gail, for her support and counsel this year. She has been the one that tells me what I need to hear, but sometimes don't want to, who listens to my so-called brilliant ideas, my worries and suffers through my occasional rants. I think she is the one who's probably the most relieved, though, that my term as mayor is ending tonight. Thank everyone again. All right, we are now going to, I'm now going to call for nominations for the new mayor. I just need to, I'll remind everybody that these do not require a second. So would anyone like to nominate our next mayor?
I would, Mr. Mayor. It gives me great pleasure to move to nominate Laura Palmer Lohan as the city of San Carlos mayor.
All right, thank you, Sarah. We have Laura Palmer Lohan nominated as our, our next mayor. Crystal, are you with us?
I'm trying to be. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, okay. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins? Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Okay, there's no way I can get away from this echo. Laura, I'm so sorry, I'm gonna have to. Does that work? No. Okay, let me, let me step into the back room for one second.
Ron, your comments were well taken. Crystal has been struggling with audio issues all night, and she's done a great job. Yes.
Oh, can you hear me okay now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, I'm gonna administer the oath to our new mayor. Mayor Palmer Lohan, it's my honor to administer the oath to you. If you can raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties for which you are about to enter?
I do.
Thank you, Mayor Palmer Lohan, and congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Figure out all the audio. So thank you so much, I really appreciate that. So now, as my first act as the new mayor of San Carlos, I have the great privilege and honor of calling for nominations for vice mayor.
Mayor Palmer Lohan, it would be my honor to move to nominate Sarah McDowell as the city of San Carlos vice mayor.
Thank you. And at this time, if there's no discussion. Crystal, if you could call the roll. Okay, I will try. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
And Vice, Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Okay. Sarah, if you can raise your right hand, please. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties for which you are about to enter?
I do, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations. So at this time, if there's a council would like to make comments?
Well, I guess I need to learn.
All right, I see Adam has his hand up.
I can't find my other virtual hand right now. I'm gonna do that if I can.
Councilmember Rack?
All right, I'm gonna start with Vice Mayor McDowell and move up to the mayor. So Sarah, congratulations on being selected vice mayor for the coming year. I was honored to nominate you and look forward to your continued thoughtful leadership on this council and in the city of San Carlos. And Mayor Palmer Lohan, congratulations on your well deserved selection as mayor of San Carlos. I think it is awesome to have two smart, talented women leading this council in you and Sarah. 2021 will bring many interesting challenges and also opportunities. And I look forward to your leadership during this time as we hopefully begin to emerge from this pandemic. And what I'm really looking forward to is some in-person meetings at some point in 2021 where you can actually use the real gavel versus a fake gavel to open and close these meetings. And I wish you both best of luck leading us in the coming year.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you very much, Mayor Palmer Lohan. I'm gonna have to get used to these titles. Tonight has been a very special opportunity to thank those who are moving on for their many years of service, as well as to welcome those joining us. This evening is also special because it has some historical significance for San Carlos. Since the city's incorporation in 1925, only six women have been elected to serve on our city council, including me and Laura. Just four women have ever served as mayor. I felt very honored to nominate someone as hardworking, accomplished and thoughtful as Laura Palmer Lohan to serve as our next mayor. And I am humbled by the opportunity to serve as vice mayor beside her. For the first time ever, San Carlos now has two women serving in these positions of leadership at the same time. And it is my hope that this is just the beginning. And we can redouble our efforts to seek diversity in our elected and appointed roles in San Carlos. I feel very hopeful for 2021. Four of our five council members are still raising school age children at home. And Ron just became a first time grandfather. The future of San Carlos and what that means for our children and our grandchildren is top of mind for every single one of us. We all care very deeply about this town, our residents, our small businesses and our city staff. We have a long and challenging year of recovery ahead. But in typical San Carlos fashion, I know we can accomplish anything as long as we do it together. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Mayor Palmer Lohan. You don't know how long I've waited to say those words. I am so proud of you and Sarah for becoming mayor and vice mayor. It's, I think it's a historical moment in, in the sense that I'm not sure we've ever had two women as mayor and vice mayor at the same time. It's possible that it might have happened back when Sally Mitchell and, and Sylvia Nelson were on the council. But it may not have. So I just think it's, it's so important in this day and age that we have, that we have women on our council. One of these days, we may have five women on the council. Heck, we had five men on the council for way too long, so. But I don't want to belabor that point. The, the, the most important thing is that the two of you are, as was said earlier tonight, not only intelligent, but compassionate at the same time. You, for lack of a better way to say it, you get it. You, you, you understand this community better than most anybody that I can think of. We, I am just so grateful to serve on this council, to be embarking on the next four years with you. My sincerest, absolute sincerest hope, Laura, is that you are declared an essential person and that the rest of us are, and we can all get a vaccine in the next couple of months and we can go back to sitting on the dais at live in-person meetings. I know that probably won't happen, but my, my other sincere wish for you is that you don't have another 2020. I think we're gonna, I think things are looking up and they're gonna be much better next year. You know, you can always call me, Sarah, you can call me too. But I'm sure that, you know, you'll, you'll rely on Adam and John as well. I'm looking, really looking forward to your leadership this year. I think you both are gonna do a wonderful job. So thanks again and congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, Mayor Palmer Lohan, congratulations. Very, very well deserved. I'm just really inspired by your dedication and curiosity. And just, you're, you're really an inspiring public servant. And I look forward to the coming year under your leadership and, you know, as I find my sea legs, as it were. And really looking forward to serving beside you. And Vice Mayor McDowell, very impressed with all your hard work and dedication. And, and having both of you leading our council, that's very exciting. If, if that really is the first time in our history as a city, what a great milestone. And I guess I'll just point out, our current planning commissioner, planning commission chairperson, Ellen Garvey is a woman as well. So we are very strongly represented with, with women in San Carlos at the moment, and that is just fantastic. And I share the pursuit of more diversity on our council and in our commissions and elsewhere throughout the city. And just, I'm excited for this year and for future years serving alongside both of you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I have some comments, but before I make those, I'd like to call on members of the public. The Honorable Vice Mayor Redwood City Hale, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Palmer Lohan. Some of you may be wondering, why is this vice mayor of Redwood City sticking around for this San Carlos transition meeting? Well, I will say that I also ran my campaign in 2018 with, with members Rack, Vice Mayor McDowell and the mayor. And I think you just form a special bond with those individuals, particularly when they're your neighbors. And I've had the real pleasure of working with both the mayor and the vice mayor. And I just wanted to add a couple of comments. The mayor and I worked together on the Peninsula Clean Energy Board's strategic plan. And it was a really inspiring task to be thinking about how we were gonna tackle climate change as a county together. And we were both called onto this committee. And she is just incredibly sharp, a phenomenal communicator and had so much to offer that I think some of the more senior board members were really excited to have her, to have her on that committee, but also on the board. And then Sarah, I, I just have to say, you know, you've been such a phenomenal friend and ally for me. And I am so inspired by the work that you have done, literally feeding members of both of our communities. Because as you had pointed out, so many Redwood City residents were coming and looking for, for food assistance from the program that you serve at and, and also diapers. And you know how, how much we, we all care so much about children and youth. And I watched both you and Laura step up and take those next steps on helping all the children in our community. And so I really appreciate both of your leadership and I'm really grateful to be vice mayor at the same time that you will be mayor and vice mayor. Look forward to serving with you both.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale, I appreciate that. Any additional comments from the public at this time? All right, hearing none, I will make some of my remarks. I'll keep them brief. I know it's been a long evening with lots of gratitude expressed. And but I wanted to just share mine. I want to thank my colleagues for your confidence in me. I want to thank staff for your depth ability to take direction from five bosses and the community, which constitutes 30,000 people, and make the city hum. Thank you to my neighbors for trusting me to represent you. And most importantly, thank you to my friends and family, and my friends know that you are my family. I want to thank Kathy, Bradley, and Gregory for your ongoing support. As was shared this evening, this job is absolutely impossible without an incredible support system, and the three of you show that to me every single day. I want to let you all know that I'm committed to running meetings with efficiency while assuring all voices are heard. The next year will be extraordinarily challenging as we work together to conduct city business against the backdrop of a global pandemic. Yet I know we will prevail as we are resilient, supportive, and a welcoming community. There's much work to be done, and I welcome your input and appreciate your support. And to our new vice mayor, congratulations, Vice Mayor McDowell. I look forward to working with you in this new role. I know that you will serve your community with passion, commitment, and care. And I think, to your point, this is the first time in the city of San Carlos that we have had a chair of the planning commission who is female, a mayor, a vice mayor, and now a police captain. So we've got lots of work to get done. Let's do it. Thank you, everybody. This meeting is officially adjourned.
Great job, Laura. Good night. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Nicely done. Congratulations.